Let's call a meeting order, please stand. The closing of the meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Group of minutes from previous meeting.
What would you do?
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections? We will be none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carries. Agenda, I have a couple things to add real quick, this includes the table that um we have a I don't know what you'd call it, the LEC is looking for a sub recipient for grant application they're gonna put in and they'd like the faulty to be the uh that's our recipient so that we go on a new business as well as we need to have a discussion about emergency management grant funding uh for now and the coming years, so that we go on a new business as well.
May I be approved with amendments?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve the agenda as a level. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Evan, no questions?
Uh first of all, just some updates on projects. The big project on Ramsey County two, hauling mine. Yeah, we pushed that paving last week on the 1.3% over by on the continents, but the lower content was all half percent over, so it's a bargain. I can't remember what I'm stating. And gravel, poaches, and you know, quite less than mine, so. I think that's a trap, which we get a difference of this half. But federally means half, but not half. Well, questions on on projects, the Ramsey two project?
Looks good.
Drive's nice, too, though. We still got paint lines for it, but we're gonna try to make it on the floor. Lines up first. Okay, and our chip seal project started yesterday, and it should be done tonight if everything goes right. That's on Ramsey three, going part two. No questions about that? Oh, I was in contact with the striper today about that. They said I put the fog seal on there yet, and actually, we push our next week probably. And we'll try to put out.
On Ramsey three?
Yes.
The brush. Okay, we're moving along.
Yeah, now Ramsey four, South of Dwyer, and uh so we're gonna put some gravel on some bear spots on there. They told me I would go along with like $2,000 worth, 500 yards, uh $4 a yard. And they they were gonna haul it at their expense and apply it, load it. And they got up 800 yards, but they said that they would keep the extra. So it's still like a cost of two or two thousand for the gravel, five ground they did there. We fixed one soft spot.
Yeah, I can buy, yeah, it looks good. They knew the job.
Hold this to him up there.
They caught a angle with a little rep, so they can relate it, so it didn't make trouble.
And the next uh paper patching, the goal that Strata had, I I feel like a good motion to get that paid for $70,950, $30.
Second, we have a motion in the second to pay uh for paper patches to Strata. Any discussion?
That's what we thought it was gonna be, right? I was figuring certainly five thousand.
Any discussion, vote by who?
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Lightfoot? Aye.
And also the board director that we got from other, somehow we missed that bill on last month, so I'd like to get paid this at this meeting for 5,730 dollars, 70%.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Jason. Motion in the second to approve the uh rural draft for many years, could be further discussion. None, rule of thumb, language.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Field?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries.
Now, one thing I need to add was uh for the two years, we do the certified miles for the townships. Uh we've got to prove the state how many miles they maintain, so they get their share of the gas tax money and whatever. So we've got that done, but it requires a signature of the chairman. So we need a motion for the chairman to sign now.
Certainly.
Second.
Motion in the second to sign the certified by the township, through the session. Okay, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carries. Let's go. Um yeah, okay, our finished business. Uh county recorder position. We've had a couple weeks, huh, two weeks? To digest that sort of, we don't have any county recorder. Uh what is the thought process and the wishes of the commission on how we should move forward? Wanting more, I guess we'd be appointing a new situation on the commission. All right, commissioner, move your letters, it's on the phone. Thoughts, comments, anything?
I think the uh commission has the the opportunity to redesignate that position. We can, you know, appoint a replacement time in, but we could redesignate that from an elected position to an appointed position going forward.
Okay.
How many apps did we have? Maybe our HR personnel know that. How many apps approximately do we have for that position, assistant recorder? Do you remember that?
I don't have the top of my head, I think you interviewed at least three good captains, I think, or three candidates.
Well, you did the, Crystal did the initial screening for the minimum requirements, so the only ones that hit my guess um were the people who met the minimum requirements, but I think we actually had thirty, if you know the ones that didn't hit my guess? But only like, like twelve made it, so probably me?
I said like all to fourteen if I remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Approximately thirty that applied?
Yeah, so like sixteen to eighteen people didn't need minimum qualifications.
You see, we had a lot of people who are interested in this position.
Well, and I'm not saying that Deb would do a bad job, but if we're not gonna have uh our officials still alter position for their entire term, and we continue to allow our that process to continue, kind of, it always will. You know, it's probably been thirty-five years or so before we have a, somebody run for an office up here. And I'm not saying that we haven't had great elected officials, um but what happens if we appoint somebody that isn't? I mean, it can make it very difficult, it becomes a very difficult process to even know. And there is a statute in place that would allow county commissions to do that. Chapter eleven, ten, dot two, county officer combination separation and redesignation. A county may with out requiring local citizens to permit county home rule powers. And one of them is redesignating an elected county office as an appointed office and or as an appointed office as an elected office, so it can go either way. But it opens up that door and gives us an opportunity. Well, it's a it's a process where we have to go through, so it's something that we can consider. Um we still have, what, forty-five days before Katie's uh done and out of here? So we can look at this process if we want, if something we wanna consider.
Jeff, what I was just mentioning to Ed was uh I love the view that if we were gonna make that change, that would be something appropriate to include in a home rule charter.
Yeah.
Um so that people have a chance to weigh in on that change, because we're gonna need to appoint someone anyway, but if we chose to go that way, you know, you could you could give that to the people. Um because I have I have heard strong opinions in both directions. And I think that it should fall to the community to decide if they feel that a change like that is appropriate.
And that that is certainly, that's one of the options that they remain within this statute, is that if the the community and the citizens do not like that decision, they can go ahead and and by the power of the people decide to go the other way.
Yeah.
And regardless of what the the home rule charter does as we move forward of that process, um you know, that this will give an opportunity for that position to go where we have.
And there's a there's a mix of how counties have done this, I think, too, because some counties like CAS have done it through resolution process, which is allowable by the law. And some counties like Burley actually just had it on the primary ballot, even though they could have done it through resolution. But they decided to ask for people because they wanted to get feedback, and it was it was purely resounding, I think, that they wanted to keep it in an elected position. You know, so it just, but it is an option in the tool camp, but like you said, I I I tackle Rufus's thoughts. The one thing that I I remember the most probably going through the home rule charter when we had the open meetings and the hearings were there were strong opinions both ways about that concept of of home rule or the toolbox kind of legislation on on whether in our department we like to elect people. It seems that there's there's a reason why we're one of the only states in the nation, I think, that elects aid commissioners and and tax commissioners and all these different positions, we like to elect people. Uh and I think that's an overriding thing in a lot of different communities, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't still consider things maybe. If you know, it's it's always good to look at things occasionally, see if things could work differently or be more efficient. If it's something we wanna look at through the home rule charter, it's something we can most definitely have a discussion. And then we could do it that way, or we could, or if it's something where we feel like we would like to possibly do it in a pointed position, I still think that it's would be beneficial to put it in front of the people about, at least to my mind, if that's something we would like.
I agree.
Even though we have the option to do it the other way, I I just, I I like the concept of asking the community if it's something they would like us to do.
Well, I'm I'm comfortable with that.
But yeah, but that's something, like you said, we've got until, what, until the ballot get finally, September first? First meeting of September, basically. So we've got some time to think about that, but in the interim, I think it would be beneficial to decide who's going to sit in the chair. You know, on on September, if we're gonna, if we're going to go ahead with the recommendation of our our sitting recorder uh or if we're going to make the decision to open it up to see if we'd like more applicants, or how if we're gonna do it, because I think it would be beneficial to have that process started now, depending upon how that will go, you know, on the way until too late. We can always make the decision through home rule or decide we put it on the ballot separately. Uh all the way after that push order. Thoughts, comments? Just two sentences.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to strongly again recommend Deb Bockmeyer, be appointed to fill my term um in my position. I've worked closely, very closely with her for over a year. Not only has she been right by my side for a year, she's also extremely intelligent, a self-starter and a self-learner. And she's honest and dependable, and I think she would make a excellent partner.
Okay. Any additional thoughts from the commission? At this point, we have to make a decision if we're gonna table, if we're gonna do something.
I'd like a motion to table this kind of, you know, we have to tell the options of what we can do with the best we can.
Okay. Yeah, a motion to table, do we have a second to that motion?
We'll second.
We have a second. Motion to table is not available. Uh all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carries. Motion to table is through. Okay. Group of minutes, discussion. Uh the only thing I would have to add is I think uh we need to clarify portion of the policy because we've had questions from staff. And I will completely take the blame on this because I didn't catch it, and I'm the one that kind of put it together for the committee to look at, and we didn't catch it, so. Under the portion talking about respiratory etiquette, um the mask policy can be looked at as being contradictory to itself. Uh and it's, again, my fault completely. So in a paragraph previous, it says the use of masks while not required is highly recommended. And then the next paragraph, it says each employee will be provided with a mask for personal use with usage required for visitor and customer contact in all hallways, common areas, and in situations where social distancing is impractical. The problem is, is it says required in one portion, recommended in the portion before, the recommendation portion of it talking through the committee was supposed to be for visitors coming into the building. That was the intent of the language. Uh simply because in talking as a committee, I guess, and Candy can chip in anything that I might get wrong or or misremember. We felt since we have nobody at the door, enforcing a policy of telling people they had to wear a mask coming into the building would be virtually impossible. And how and how would you require somebody to wear a mask if um you can't enforce it, essentially? But we can, we can require our staff to wear masks, I mean, we could require the public to wear masks too, but it would be an absolute nightmare trying to enforce it. And that was the thought process behind it at the committee level. Uh the health department had Al on there uh on the meetings, and then he wasn't able to make the second meeting, but um like, an public health nurse is on the second one, and she thought that that policy made sense, that any contact with the public, we should be masked. When we're sitting at our desks, taking social distance, then we then we don't have to mask. It's a reasonable policy. Uh we've, uh Crystal has had some, I think it's Crystal, mine, I think it's, sorry.
It's Crystal.
Oh, has asked a question of the state's attorney about how other counties are doing it, as well as talking with other HR professionals of the other counties. Uh and it's a gamut of all the way from no no mask usage to essentially, I think, for visitors, some are requiring visitors to wear masks. The counties at this point that I've seen that have been doing that are ones that already have people at the door, like CAS county, where they have a metal detector and they can basically enforce the policy. Uh and but they're requiring mask usage at all times for all staff and all the, all the
CAS county.
CAS county, yes.
Sure.
Yeah. Uh and and other counties are doing similar things, some counties are doing more like we're doing, where it's all contact with the with the public, with customers, any situation where you cancel social distance, or reasonably might want to do a situation where you cancel social distance. So the only thing I would say is, I don't know how everybody feels towards it, but the only thing I would like to make a change is for clarification of the policy from my perspective, is on that first portion where it says the use of masks will not required is highly recommended. All we would do is insert language that says the use of masks will not required by visitors and customers is highly recommended. That would say that that section's about visitors and customers, and it's still requiring it then for our staff on public contact. There's also a portion in there that says that you're up to mask up when you're in a vehicle with somebody else, which is reasonable since you can't social distance at that point. And there's time for highway department, if there was gonna have to be a safe pickup there or something like that, you still have a choice.
So. Motion to make those changes?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Do you have a second? Further discussion, thoughts?
And this is for our two department heads?
Of of who I've talked to, I guess, at this point. And and I I think if Crystal and Candy, again, they were both on the committee, was that the intent when it was written? In my thought process, I mean, and chip in if I'm wrong, because that's that's kind of what, I think that's what I was conveying as was the intent of how it was written. But I just wouldn't agree with it.
And for our folks, I guess, that's correct?
That's correct. Yeah, and we've had some, and we've had questions because some departments are, read that recommendation portion as applying to their department. Some people are reading it as though uh the required portion of it is what they should be doing, so we need some clarification. And I figure we're gonna run into some bumps here.
Right.
But, you know. But apparently, according to Candy and Visin, what they're history, the first day went pretty long. Uh and and the court system, we're still waiting on them to uh get back, they don't really have any guidelines yet. We're still waiting for their guidelines to come back too, to see how the court system's gonna handle what they do. So uh it's kind of a gamut, back and forth, but just clarification of the policy makes sense.
Court system's not holding court?
Not not currently, no. I think they're they're still doing telephonic stuff.
First of, first of July, what was the start?
That's the the next closest date, I think.
Yes, that's what I've been thinking.
They're not doing hearings here, they're doing some at the LEC.
Yeah, they're still doing some, and everything, yeah, everything in the court.
So Olson is doing his hearings at the LEC, Judge Fong is doing my phone on the front here.
Okay. Yeah.
Hundred fifty fifty.
Yeah, but they're still not jury trials, they're still just body hearings, things like that. Yeah. When the jury trials happen, that's when they're gonna have to, that's why they're trying to develop the policy, because when they start calling people, and then they're gonna have to, you know, sit for room and discuss things, they're gonna have to have the policy in place to make sure that they keep you safe. Okay.
So where are all those changes at? I either have a old, or I'm looking at the wrong spot in your board.
You might have the wrong one, I don't know. Is it the second one, does it have underlined portions to that, underlined portions were the additions from the first report, uh first reception to the second one?
It's the third page.
Third page, I'm sorry, I don't have the, I just have the.
First, the first heading, social distancing, is it? In all hallways, in common areas, is underlined?
Very clear.
So just so I'm clear on this. As long as there's no visitors, we're not required, or that would say?
Yes, as long as you can, as long as you can social distance in a workspace, yes, we would not be requiring, but if a visitor comes in, then you would be required to mask. Uh but again, social distancing is still gonna have to happen in your workplace. You know, in any situation like you talked about, sometimes you need two sets of hands when you're working on something in the shop, have to have a mask up. But if they're working fifteen feet apart, it's, it don't, like, again, we've talked about, it comes down to the common sense portion of responsibility and trying to do our best to do what we want to do. But we wanna make it so that we keep people safe and healthy.
Yeah, so I think we had, and I might have been part of that, but I'm currently heading when I kind of updated with that training. So when we're in the hallways, do we have to be masked, or I I mentioned to him that if you're going in the hallway, you should have your mask at least, because if you're gonna run into him, you should be distancing to the distance. But should we require it at all times when they leave their workspace?
My intent under the policy would be yes, we would require it.
Yes.
Do you know that the workspace in the hallway?
Well, the problem is, is you don't have everyone who you're gonna run into, though. I mean, you you think you can socially distance, yes, but you know, I I guess I look at it from the standpoint of, I I understand everyone has to wear a mask, I don't like wearing masks. But there are places in our community where people are working, where they're wearing a three-day ownership, it's not a question, it is do it. Your law, our employees have to mask up, it's corporate policy. So I don't think it's too much much of us to ask that we keep the public, and and the point of a mask isn't to keep you healthy, it's to keep the public healthy. It's to keep the other person healthy. So we're asking our staff to basically make sure that when they might run into a situation where uh they won't be able to socially distance. Have a mask on. That's it. That's all a mask. And I don't, I I, and I might be wrong. Actually, I fully admit that I might be.
And asking may be too light of a term.
What required?
Well, yep, um it's either, you know, you have to do it, or because asking and recommending is is really, you know, it leaves a lot of that personal responsibility. Everybody has a different view on what this this disease or this pandemic or this virus is. Um and your idea of what and how to socially distance and mine may be completely different. But if you're telling me one thing and um it's has to be done, then I can understand that. And abide by those rules while in in the building. You know, but I think, I don't know, I, it may be, maybe that this clarification will help, I'm not sure. I can hear in the building every day, um ideas, thoughts, will it work, will it not work, will?
I don't know who's going to monitor, they do work, they don't.
If they don't.
And what the consequences are.
And what the consequences will be, kind of thing.
Just thought on that, so I, maybe it's up to the department head to monitor that, and if we're putting in a policy and flattering it, then and if somebody's not doing it, then we're not binding by the plan, so like, to be in place and.
Is that what you said, Crystal, it's up to the department head to monitor?
Yeah, and enforce it.
Suggests that.
But if it's another employee, not your, not your only employee.
You can, I mean, shoot it, shoot the department head an email and let him know, or you know.
Well, I mean, to me, this is just another, I mean, it's another policy that should be treated the same way that like a sexual harassment policy should be treated, right? I mean, in other words, what I'm saying is 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 this is the way that we are operating now, and and people need to accept that that's what's happening.
Yeah, and and like you said, if it's not your employee, I think the easiest way to do it is to the department head, you see it, you can just talk to the department head, just give him a handout. I don't know how else you can do it. Here, like I said, we're.
That's why I'm wondering how to process. Let's just say, talking about an employee, an operator, if you don't have a reason to can't wear, I don't know what she'll say to the operator.
Can't?
I've talked to him, and now I have trouble with him not doing it.
I really, I don't think that would be the intent. You wouldn't, I mean, if if you've tried and you've tried to to work with the employee, if they have a medical issue and they can't wear a mask, then tell them to contact Crystal and and we'll work through the process because obviously we have to make a reasonable combination.
Right on, just.
Yes. But in in that situation, if if they won't wear the mask, then we're, and and that's the required policy, it's no different than like Rufus said, if if they were sexually harassing somebody in the workplace, then we have to go through the process of whatever the, what whatever our steps are in our process in in terms of employee dis.
Let's hope we don't have to do that.
Yeah, let's hope we don't have to do that, I don't, that's, I don't wanna be having to, that's not the intent at all.
We're all in this together.
Yeah.
We're all employees, we're taking off paycheck.
Yeah.
So let's try to work together.
Yeah.
Maybe a month, six weeks?
Yeah, that's that's all, I don't know.
I don't know.
But we're just gonna have to operate this way for a while.
The the great news is that we have some really good and positive numbers in Ramsey County. Big fat zero of active cases.
Like you said earlier, CAS county, yeah.
Yeah, we're we're not a CAS company, we don't have a bunch of cases. Uh there are surrounding, our surrounding counties have very, very low numbers, if any at all. Um so, and we'll knock on wood if we had some, and hope that that continues, but um.
So you can't knock on wood, you have to have a table.
Great. Social distancing, that's a big part of everything.
Do all the offices have a plexiglass? In front of, every last one of them?
I think we still might have some that's important, maybe. I might be thinking of something aside from that. At every office I've been into, I've really got the plexiglass on. Yeah, oh, Ronan.
So we already, you've already had a precaution.
We have a precaution, so.
Okay, okay, okay.
Ronan.
I just have a question about the political subdivisions and the private business that occupy our courthouse and enforce the court system. I think we're all in this together, and I think the important thing is, we are public servants, and people look to us to set an example. And we owe it to our healthcare system in our town, we don't have a ventilator, we simply do not have one. And I know that you probably get somewhere to get on one, but I think we, we really need to take a look at that, it's really hard, I have thirty, twenty-seven employees that asked me yesterday. And you know, a, a lot of child welfare workers are gonna pick right up on the discrepancy, and I, and I, I felt bad that I hadn't read it better myself, but, um. I, I think it's very difficult to, um, feel like a team when you have people just not being a team. And so I don't know what that's about, but, um, I think that if you occupy this building space, there should be some parameters around your behavior, but that's how I'm feeling.
I don't think anyone decided this, so three tables disagrees.
Yeah, I mean, the, the intent of the policy is, is for our employees, but it's also for our, our, any, any, any kind of property. At least that's, that would be the intent of the policy, as, as Ray. Anybody that's in the building should be following the guidelines.
I didn't see any masks yesterday worn by anyone, but I, I wasn't really looking, but I didn't see any masks worn by anyone, um, except one person that was in the public area, that was an employee of a local subdivision. So it was just hard being, to say the least.
But like you said, from that last department head, we.
Yeah, and I'll convey that, I'll write in.
Yeah, it, it wasn't.
If it wasn't.
Yeah, and, and again, I'll, I'll take the blame on that, because I, I did not clarify it all enough tonight, when we put it together, just don't be kind, so I, I should have gotten two, I read it three more times, so. Again, I, that's my, that's my fault.
And I might have thought, thought I'd then watered straight away down from that, so I'll reiterate, we're reading, clearing that.
We're, 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 we're flying through completely uncharted territory with all this, so all we can do is try our best together.
This our fourth month now?
Yeah. We're just trying, yeah, we're just trying to figure out how to get this place running and, and running in safe fashion, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have a motion in second.
I do.
I have one more question, now, is this gonna pertain to just this building, for all county employees? Cause we have cabinet, separate building, and we have sheriff's department, that's a separate building.
All county properties, okay. I, that would be my, the intent, I believe, I, I would think it's more of that way.
Okay, well, like I said, we have, we have two separate entities that are out there that.
I already said. No, I, I, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, and, no, we just need clarity, I drop, I'm completely. Yeah, that would be the intent, I mean, and if it's.
All county employees, period.
All county employees and county properties, I mean, we can't, I don't know what the LEC is doing, because technically, we own half of that building, but that's not part of. But those are. And, yes, the sheriff's department. Look, okay. Were you gonna?
Were you, were you, were you gonna have to call the?
Call a question? Question has been called, so discussion, discussion can no longer occur. All in favor of motion on the table, put in a language, vote by saying aye.
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 Vote same sign. Motion carries. Uh, the, the only question I would have on that, everybody, that, that, that clarifies it, correct? We're okay with the clarity that that gives, and, and in this discussion, we have clarity, there, if anyone's okay, I think we have understanding, yes. Okay. Okay.
Kathy, you will make that minor change and mail that out?
Yeah, and, and Crystal can also get it out to the employees, just to get clarity with the policy, and hopefully, but I, nothing else comes up, but I assume something will also come up. Okay, from there, we go into new business, approval of site authorizations, it says six, but we have a second. That, that answers the six.
All the same, right, Candy? Same logic?
Yep.
Who's approved, sorry?
Motion in a second to approve the site authorization. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Uh, annual conference delegate, that's in the packet.
Uh. That's, uh, the NAACP convention got canceled, of course, the National Convention got canceled, so anybody that was registered to have that. If you want, I can listen to a live meeting now, and then they want one delegate from every county to, there's a vote for a new third chair, basically, for the association. So we need to, um, doesn't make sense, I'll, I'll be on the call, so I guess I can do it, nobody else will be on the call.
Sounds like you gotta volunteer. Are you gonna make Kevin?
We're motioning for Kevin, we have a second, we have a second, further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Shouldn't have volunteered.
That's in July.
July thirteenth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll be on the call.
Don't be on the, oh, you're on the cell, okay. Okay, uh, standing committees of the North Dakota County Commissioners Association. It's that time of year, again, we're looking for people to, uh, sit on the committees. We've got the audit committee, the nominating committee, resolutions committee, and the legislative committee. The lead commissioner, Wakefield, has been on the resolutions committee.
Correct.
I've sat on the legislative committee once, but not this past session.
Yeah, I'll be willing to.
On, you thought?
Resolution.
Resolutions again?
Make that motion.
Yeah, good. Okay, motion in second to nominate, which is the resolutions committee. Uh, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Uh, is anybody else interested in sitting on, or being nominated to sit on any of these, I guess?
I, I volunteer for that registered, if you can, unless you want to.
No, you might do, that's fine. We have a motion, voting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion in the second.
Thank you.
We have a second to, uh, uh, nominate, uh, commissioner, quickly, let's say. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries, anybody else interested in? I don't think I really wanna nominate. Okay, seeing no one else, maybe that's okay, thank you for, for vote few. Okay, uh, legal licenses. We have, it's in our packet, but the number of legal licenses, and it appears as though we have. Eleven. Number one line is just the line with the numbers on it, or like words on there. Uh, we have eleven, we also have, let's see. Paperwork from the state's attorney, in regards to one of the applications, I believe. How we would handle this.
Are they all good standing, standing? Give me your money.
Um, there is one that has.
Just the notes we have here.
Yeah, I guess.
Now we're screwed, that one then? Or we can get some other information?
Sure, you can get the proper paperwork.
And, and we haven't received that paperwork at this point, correct? We just, again, like we did before, we, we need, uh, just the release, correct?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine. We still working on it, okay, so, I guess I, I would entertain a motion to approve the other ten, and then we'll allow the eleven to time to get the proper paperwork.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve ten, the ten legal licenses and, uh, table, essentially table one. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Uh, LEC grant application. We don't have to give. Candy can probably explain more, I don't wish you, but, but, yeah, essentially, the LEC's looking at getting a grant to do some, what did you say, some, uh?
Um.
What's the big system?
Ivan system.
Cyren.
Cyren, this is for Cyren.
I, no, I don't. No, I don't.
Ivan.
Ivan, yeah. I could be in that, not for corporate.
Okay, okay, yeah, who is the grant through?
Our central?
Um.
FEMA? I guess it doesn't matter, essentially, they're, they're looking for a grant, and they need somebody to pass sponsor, or be the subject, and they can, they can. And they're gonna try to do some Ivan work, which is good.
Yeah.
For a while, so. We have a motion to act as a subject, I guess.
I'll make that move.
We have a motion?
You better.
And we'll call him in a second. We have a motion in a second to, uh, uh, approve grant account, is a subject, subject for the grant process for the LEC. Further discussion.
Very beneficial and significant.
Okay, let's do it.
It's awesome.
And well, everybody, yeah, having Ivan is just a good thing.
Most of our, a lot of the major camps have Ivan already, so they're doing their initial appearances by Ivan, and it saves a lot of time, and transporting, and everything else, by not even taking them out of the, the old building. So it's very beneficial for him, but it's a little, it's much better, badly, but it will also benefit us, you know, so.
Yeah, I would, it's a way.
It's a way, and it is.
Okay.
Also, I want to mention that that's, that's two grants that Rob has carried for the LEC, to save us a lot of, just maybe those grants.
Plus, yeah, we got more of an operating.
Yeah, we have, yeah, it's a good deal. We're, we're, very, very aggressively.
Okay, further discussion, uh, motion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Uh, emergency manager grant funding, we got Chris here, would you like to explain? Can you explain better than I can explain?
I don't know, I, I, I'm kind of bumbling it myself.
Essentially, I'll, I'll try to explain, you chip in. Um, Chris and I have been conversing about it, he has the, the twenty twenty-one grant application for cost share for his salary.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty. You're working on that currently, correct?
Trying to close up twenty nineteen.
Close up twenty nineteen, and then you're applying for twenty twenty, for June thirtieth is the deadline.
Correct, okay.
Um, it's more, uh, an awareness thing, since we changed, or we, we hired a new emergency manager in the middle of the year, obviously, we've underused the grant funding, uh, accordingly. So, uh, we are going to not necessarily have to pay back grant money, but we will just essentially be giving back the grant money that is not used, because it has to be used towards certain things, wages, benefits, as well as, uh, some other incidentals.
Some tasks, like bills, home bill.
Yeah, and, and when Chris came aware of this, uh, he looked into, could we use it on radios, or try to utilize it someplace else, and they will all excuse it. Uh, so the question then is, going forward, um. How much, you know, we don't know exactly how much grant funding we're going to need, or use, vice versa, essentially, right? So we need, we, we need some guidance on, on thought process for, you know, essentially, where our budget's gonna be at, somewhat, so he could, he could put it to what the grant's gonna be necessary for.
Yeah, um, the, the budget was for twenty twenty was, you know, rough estimate, if we're gonna use that rough estimate, rough estimate, move forward, go for that. Um, just to say, majority of the ENG grant pays for half of my salary and benefits, so that number is the spiritual number. So, whatever that number be, the, our FEMA covers half of my, my issue, my benefits, so if we have, the difference now between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the funds are different, that's why we're having to, to re-ally fund back to the state. So, or back to federal government, excuse me, federal government. Um, so if we utilize the twenty twenty budget that I, I was not a part of, uh, I just wanted to all forward new business to, to shore it in.
You just use this year's salary then, correct, as a guideline?
I can't, I, I can't, because my salary is different than what was projected on the budget, than what like was projected on the budget to be my salaries to afford.
Yeah.
You'll have to use the salary that was projected on the budget, if you want the full value of that.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's where the problem comes in, because our fiscal year is January one to December thirty-one, and the federal government fiscal year rolls over October one, I believe. So, that's where the, kind of, the problem comes in, because we have a budget that was put in, and, and the grant funding doesn't match the budget lines.
Have you talked to other groups, agencies, or organizations, how they're doing it?
Yeah, they, you want to match as close as you can, and it, it was, it's different. Um, so what?
Give me some figures then, here.
So let's just, let's just use the imaginary numbers.
Give me, give me the right thing.
So, an imaginary number is, the, so and so.
I understand what you're doing, but I'll pose, are you within a thousand dollars, or where are you?
We're in, we're about.
It'd be twenty thousand, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to pay back. And the question is, since we're giving that twenty thousand back, are they gonna fund us back? They won't fund us back to the level we were at previously, because they won't make an exception for the fact that we didn't have an emergency manager on salary for X one month during the fiscal year.
And I'm walking at a different level, which is, here's the grant level, this is the pay, this is the difference, that's kind of where we're, that's what we're, you know, with now. Including with the twenty twenty budget. Here's what is budgeted at, here's the salary level.
Have you talked to anybody in Bismarck?
Yes.
Overseas emergency managers?
Yes, actually, the lady.
Any way, any way they can help us set this up?
Uh.
Right way? It seems like we're kind of.
It would be set up, it would be set up the right way if my salary matched the budget.
Yeah, I understand that, if we're on time. A little higher than that, or.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Well, for, for the last grant, yes, but for the one I'm writing for the end of this month.
The guidance I have given, I have given them, at this point, at least in my thought process, was, you're gonna have to figure out, so essentially, the remainder of this year at the salary, right? And then, next year's salary based on, um, a step, plus the two percent like we're looking at in the budget, and then we would have to, and we don't know where the doggone hell it turns out, should we have? So shoot a little high and, and go from there, that was kind of my thought process, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that we're not gonna get, no, don't be like surprised, all of a sudden, we gotta like, because we were thinking we might just have to kind of check. So it doesn't like, all of a sudden, go, why don't we cut a few much, or, or first again, and then check twenty grants at, at the end of the year. It was more informative than anything, but I wanted, I wanted everybody to be on the same page.
So just work through and forward with the budget numbers that I have?
I would say, well, yeah, not, not necessarily the budget number at hand, but it's gonna have to be, because it's gonna be, essentially, you're, you're budgeting for October one through September thirty, is the grant period, correct?
July one.
July one.
July one to July thirty-first of twenty twenty. June, June thirty. Or June thirty, sort of.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so I would say, take the, take her salaries for the next six months, plus your benefits, and then, and that would be that, and then take next year's salary plus benefits, and salaries, and plus human, and stick that in as the total number. Do my, do the thought. If that's okay with everybody.
That's not about the.
Try that, see if it works.
But don't, don't they reimburse based on actual expenses?
For the most part, yes, that's why we're, they go off the, the salary projected, and that's what, that's what the difference is, is the salary projected. And then, of course, when you turn in all your, your quarterly reports, and then, yes, then it's the actual physical number.
I mean, I, I don't want us to have to get funded back at the same time, like that's gonna be what it's gonna be, I mean, we staffed, we staffed projected, projected as well as you can for the next twelve months.
Well, that kind of thing happens all the time, with all kinds of different organizations, right? You get a grant for a very specific thing, and then it's costing you a different amount than you were expecting, you gotta give that back, that's, 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 thank you, so.
Okay.
It's not, it's not like it was coming money to begin with.
Well, yeah, and that's that's the thing, we're not, we're not giving away any of our money, it's exactly, it's just going back to the pot, basically.
Work it out.
Okay, just make sure you go.
This is a quarter, maybe just bring it where, great, very good.
Thanks, Chris.
Good. Uh these are the delegations.
I got a couple things that people want to do now, or?
We go right ahead right now, because we're going into announcements, if you can tell us announcement.
I'll try to be brief. Couple things that happened that I think this man needs to be aware of. Uh number one, with our protests that happened uh last weekend, um we followed the rules, we followed the requirements. We requested some help from DES and Bismarck, uh through the proper channels, through the proper, Chris and I worked together, and we made the proper uh requests. We received no help. We didn't need any, not gonna look, uh but we had factions in our communities that were claiming to be somewhat nonpeaceful. So we had to prepare for the worst. Um we did request a whole lot, we requested some uh pepper spray, we requested some smoke uh things to help dispel a crowd. And and they have a trailer with some riot gear in, uh helmets, shields, things like that, so if you are getting into a crowd, they're going to have some protection for our officers. That was all we requested. Uh on a side note, Fargo, who's out there on Friday the day before us, they requested armored Humvees, helicopter, uh all the ammo, all that riot gear that they had, they they received there, they sent all that. Um I got a phone call from highway patrol that said, hey, oh, well, hey, what happened to Fargo? Whatever's left, we'll get to you guys on Saturday, because Fargo's later. Saturday came around, Chief Canalski and I were busy organizing our people to make sure we had a proper response if needed. We never got a call, we never got nothing. Monday rolls around, of course, nobody's working on the weekends, so you can't get hold of anybody. Monday rolls around and the DES of Bismarck, uh, oh, it's not our responsibility, it's not our equipment, we passed along, it's too bad, it's so sad. That's the answer I got, I was not happy. So I had ruffled some feathers in Bismarck, and that's why I bring it to you guys in case you hear something.
You want us to write him a letter?
Huh?
You want us to write him a letter?
No, I think we're on the, I I ruffled, I got three phone calls back from individuals. Uh one was from the highway patrol who apologized profusely, and I said, that's fine, thank you, I appreciate that, but it's not all your fault. I said, it's also the fault of the people that required us to apply for through them to follow through, which was one of the second phone calls I got, and said, well, I said, tell them what? I said, it's yours, if I have to, if I have to apply for things through you, you have responsibility to make sure money reaches the grant if possible. And she, and this is Amy in Bismarck, she's the head of the, anyway, so I want you guys to be aware, in case you hear some rumblings and some of your, that your sheriff is being like, oh, you know what, well, yes, yes, I am. Like I said, thank God we didn't need anything, but but here's my dilemma, and I hope, so you guys understand where I'm coming from. Yes, we didn't need it, great, fine, everything turned out okay, what happens if that happens in County City? Rugby, uh one of these other towns that they they get dropped, and they have a problem. We can't just let it stop, we need to fix the system, and that's where I'm heading, so I just wanted you guys to be aware, um that, I now I'm gonna put on another convenient Bismarck to help deal with this evidently, so.
Worst worst case scenario, what would be the closest response to that that equipment that you requested?
Right, well, in this case, it would have been Fargo.
Yeah.
So three hours later, we might get it, I mean, even if I make the call to anyone, we need it, by the time they organize it and get it here, it's probably gonna be four. A lot could happen in four hours. I mean, we had factions claiming they had rocks and things stashed to shirt and places in town, so we had the potential for a a nonpeaceful. But I think they saw the show that we had, the people we had, and they decided we better not. We didn't present anybody at the thing, we were all at the LAC, we stayed there, we kept everybody there, we did not want to aggravate anybody, and we, I think we handled it very well. Um but they saw the cars parked there, and one of the organizers stated straight to me, they've got more cops here than we do, than protesters, so we better be peaceful. Then it's asked, our job is done, right? And it was, and it worked, but the problem is, is we made, we, if we would have needed it, we didn't have. And my next question is, then now I, Canalski and I are looking at, we probably need to help get our own people with riot gear. Or have it available, so I said, if I can't depend on the people that we're supposed to depend on, when they say it's not our equipment, so now we're at their beck and call. You know, in thirty five years, I've never eaten it, in my career. But what if, and the world is changing? So that's my question, I don't really want to, because it it'll sit on the shelf and collect dust, we might never eat it again, but then again, if we eat it, what do we do?
Who's who's MD DES putting it on to that they're saying it's it's not their?
They said they they allocated all that equipment to the highway patrol, so the highway patrol is responsible for allocating that out. And the request that we sent to DES, they said, we forward it to the highway patrol, so it's off our plate, we're done with it, it's now the highway patrol's responsibility. I said, so why do I do?
Yeah, why why do you?
Why do I, why do I just call the highway patrol to wrap, which I could, I have their numbers in my phone? So why like, because that's how they click, and that's what's broken with the system. And but that's what I'm trying to fix, and I just wanted you guys to be aware of what's going on, so. That's the only reason I brought it up, because it is a big deal, and we need to, you know, we participate in all the DES stuff. But yet, when we, I, we have never requested anything ever before, and the one time we make this small, I think I requested thirty total rounds of pepper spray and coal. Miss you, but for us to go buy it and have it sit on the shelf is is at least fifty, you know, about thirty five bucks a round. And if somebody has it, then we can, you know, we can just replace what we use, but that's what we get anyway. It's 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 a, it's a very iffy thing, and uh we just want our officer to be safe, so that's kind of the direction I'm leaning, is we buy our own stuff. You know, we had thirty, thirty some officers respond that we requested, uh just in case. And uh we had six helmets that we borrowed from the jail, two shields, and about fifteen things of pepper for you. Sand sand cans or a fancy old air amp, those would be personal, not enough for a crowd of fifty or a hundred. Anyway, so just.
Should we get some of this round and it keeps, right, I mean, like?
Uh they always have a shelf life on it, but and that's the problem of buying it, if you buy a bunch, just have it, five years from now, all of a sudden it's expired, and and you use it, and you know, are you viable, or something like that, you know? And that's the problem with happening once upon a time.
Okay.
I'm not worried about the rounds so much, I'm worried more about the equipment if we ever need it. Um and just, you know, we can have it in the storeroom, and just, if we have, we have it, and it'll be there forever, but, you know, that goes too, five years from now. I've got some of the old blue and white DLPP uh strap on motorcycle helmets that uh from the nineteen sixties that were there. Not gonna make it today, though.
You got motorcycle guns?
No, no, that was a riot gear.
Oh, that's right.
That was a riot gear, there was so many, uh, the motorcycle helmets with a face shield that came down flat, that uh, that kind of bubble face shield. Anyway, anyway, not about that, I just wanted you to be aware of of where I'm at with that, in case you get some rumblings from Bismarck that we're not cooperating too well. But I think with good reason, in my mind, and also Chief Canalski's line, we're not happy that we didn't, we kind of forgot. So we're trying to rectify it, but in case you get called on it or questions come up by the name or something, you kind of have a background with it. The other thing I had was just a quick thing for my budget, and this is just another thing for you guys to start thinking about, is I'm gonna request two more of the full time deputies. I've been told by district court, I've been told by our state's attorney, that I don't have enough deputies, and you need to get more. Uh we're getting used more and more for things that we can't keep up with. Um Judge Olson, you need more deputies here, because the courts requiring more, human services requiring more, uh hospitals requiring more, mental health is requiring more. And I'm running out of people to keep up with the demands. So I just wanted you to be aware, because I know money is always money. Um I've been told, put in for free, you hope to get two, well, I like to put in for what I need, I don't like to over, but I think we need two. Now, we're talking two hundred thousand dollars at a minimum. The time I get equipment and, and I don't think we need to buy cars for them. Because I think that I, what we're doing now, I can keep cars an extra year, and we can make that, but I need all the equipment that goes in the car. Five grand for radio, five grand for a video system, thousand dollars for a a cage, uh three thousand dollars for a light bar, you know, those are the things that add up. There are one time deals, but still, I just wanted, because I know the budget's coming, and that's, and I don't want to just bring it on you and say, well, what the heck is this? Also, other than that, that's all I have, any questions for me here?
I would actually like you to kind of explain to them too about the mental health committals, that I believe we're getting strangled with a bill that really shouldn't be ours. And and Steve can explain how their, the system is supposed to work, but it it doesn't. I mean, it's family, it's athlete, it's.
You know, if somebody's mentally ill, they need to go, they need to go.
I understand that.
There's the paperwork and the conversations we have with the home human service center where they're sending these people, and I can show you a text from one social, one of the workers over there. Well, there's a storm coming this weekend, and and this person might decide to run, so we're gonna emergency commit him today, so we don't have to drive him to weather on Saturday. Not an emergency commitment, definition of an emergency commitment is what? They're in jeopardy of endangering himself or somebody else, right? That's why law of the definition. The other one, they drove down here from Towner County to an appointment, they decided to emergency commit him, and they expected us, and they said, he's homeless, he has an apartment in Canyon. These are the games, and I brought this to our state's attorney, I brought this to our district judge, saying, can you help me? These are not my responsibility, they are not our Ramsey County's responsibility. Towner County should be taken there, Benson County, we have no problem Benson County and the and the tribe. They will drive their mental health vehicle, because they have to clear bed at least, so they have to go to the hospital, they leave, they won't come back. Now we have an individual from Spirit Lake Nation at the hospital that gets an emergency committed, and the judge is saying, you're stuck. Why are we stuck? And I have gotten no help from, like I said, from our legal advice, from our judges, to require those people to be able to justify why Ramsey County's responsible. But I'm sending a guy Friday night at four o'clock, well, four forty five is usually on Fridays when we get him, so never fail. Uh so I've got to find somebody to transport this person, it's been four to five hours, depending on, uh, uh, mental clearance takes three, by the way. So if they're getting medically cleared, it takes three hours in the hospital, we have to sit there and wait with them, and then it's a four or five hour drive to get them there and come back. So there's up to possibly eight hours of our time for somebody from Benson County, Towner County. And then if they don't fit their jet, they just, they're living with their significant other, and almost like what their address is, every address we have for them is Benson County, but that doesn't matter. And that's the struggle I'm having. And that's where the judges are saying, well, you need more people, well, the judges are starting to order us to do intakes in Grand Forks, that is, if if, I think that loses. Lucas gets sentenced to the penitentiary for some crime, we have to haul him to Grand Forks to a pre-sentence investigation. And sit there and wait for them to conduct it with him out in the hallway, and then bring him back. And it's anywhere from two to eight hours, depending on how it goes, and we just sit there and wait. And and it's a, it's a court order, I can't refuse it, signed by a judge, I can't refuse to not go. Juvenile court is doing the same thing. We had an issue with the juvenile court supervisor that they called, I think it was one law, and after doing on a week after day, says, I need you to get somebody to take this juvenile to Grand Forks right now. I don't have anybody. I couldn't go, all my guys were gone, I didn't have anybody, I called my guys on days off, like, they weren't around, they were out of town or they were otherwise busy, I had nobody. Well, they were refusing to take, so I had to go tell the judges, the sheriffs refusing to take. I'm not refusing anything. I ended up pulling someone out of the jail and putting them out of a spot in Carson City, because that's the only one I had to go. Now you understand the struggle of manpower that I'm having with, you know, available, with the drop of a hat, they think they can just order us, and we have to drive wherever they say.
Over the course of the year, Steve, what would be your guess on how many times this happened?
Ten?
With the mental health committals or the court?
Thirty, how many times?
Well, the mental health, we're going at least once or twice a week, if you like, at least once a week, on average, sometimes three. Uh the court stuff, not so much, but it happens, oh, a couple minutes, you know, every two weeks, maybe once or twice every couple weeks, and this is in addition.
No warning, no warning.
Well, we might have a day or two, maybe. Sometimes we get more.
Maybe an hour or something.
Sometimes, yeah.
Does the problem, the nature of an emergency committal too, we don't ever know what's gonna happen.
But emergency committal, mental health is not the responsibility of law enforcement.
I know, that that was gonna be my next question, is how does it fall on law enforcement, that's their responsibility, I mean, maybe, maybe we need to rethink how we're doing this.
And the law. I think, okay, you want me, here we go. I have been through this for years, the law says, family first, ambulance second, law enforcement should be used at the last resort. So, back, the family's scared he's gonna jump out of the car, ambulance refuses to take him, so you're here.
How come they haven't refused it?
No money, I don't know why they refused, I don't think they even called and asked them, so I started asking them. Okay, who, which family ever did he talk to, I said they would take, I want a name, tried to force them into, and who would the ambulance service did he talk to, I said, we aren't gonna go. They, wow, we don't know, well, then now they're, well, why would, the last few we've got, why would we, why would we call them? We're just trying to call you, because the sheriff's off, you take them. That's the problem with the state, you don't, but we get saddled with it, and it's it's a manpower on my part. Now I gotta send somebody completely out of the county for half a day, and then if they request a hearing, three days later, we gotta go get them and bring them back, and then take them back again. Because ninety nine percent of them go right back. Trust me, I've been fighting this for many years, but it's coming to a head now, that, I mean, when you have a a an apartment in Canyon, but you leave to come to an appointment here, and they say you're homeless? Well, their answer is, well, he will be by the time he gets back, because they're gonna get them. You're not homeless.
Okay, tell us how to fix it.
I don't, I tried, I don't know how to fix it, I gotta have more people. You you gotta want us to judge it, you gotta want us to human service there, good luck with that, I've been fighting that for years.
And it's all, it's all state now, basically.
Yeah. The hope they have is that the law says the sheriff is responsible for, as as an arm of the court, so that's how the judges can do it.
And so financially, because your law says that you're responsible, financially, the county is ultimately responsible for that, though?
Well, I don't think there's ever a bill that comes with it.
Well, your time.
Our time and our gas and our and our and our F D S, we're paying that, we're paying the deputy to be on the boat, and why us in Benson County, or why us in private? Well, because they won't go, so they refuse to go, but I know, and you have to, well, and I can't, as community character, I can't just say, you know what, everybody else, I can't leave this person to sit here and, number one, suffer in our jail. I mean, we get these emergency committals, and this is just, oh, this is what frustrates me. Well, now they're like, well, when do you have time to go? Is is tomorrow better than today? Well, you can just leave, you can just take them tomorrow. Is that an emergency committal? No. Yeah, tomorrow's fine, oh, okay, and then this person's not in jeopardy of hurt himself or anybody else, but they all have to be suicidal to go, or endanger somebody else. Yes, there are somebody to go, and most of the ones that, but I started asking these, and and they. Yes, there are some that need to go, and most of the ones that, when, I started asking these, and, and they called, they, they probably called too many times. Now I've questioned everything, and I bet the state's attorney won't even talk to me about it anymore, because her answer is, you need to go to legislature and have legislature change the law. Well, we're the only county that has the problem, because all the rest have mental health facilities in their communities. Grand Forks, Fargo, mine, not Bismarck, Dickinson, well, they all have mental health in their hospital. We don't. So all ours either go to James, through Jamestown, or if they have insurance, it could be anywhere in the state. It could be Grand Forks, mine, not, or Bismarck.
Which is a lot bigger.
Yep. But that's, you know, number doing it, one to twice a week. And that's where, I'm starting to call guys on days off and time off and, you know, hey, I need, I need you to go. But we're getting going ready. And then we're not even counting now, right now, thank goodness, not gonna look again. We're having, we're transporting that lot anymore, because we're not arresting people unless, unless it's a big war, we aren't going to get them. So that's how the court is dealing with this COVID. If you have a failed pay on a, on a DUI, for example, you just have a kid under the line, and you get stopped in Fargo. They call it, confirm the warrant, you say, no, let him go, we'll get him later. Because it's not worth the COVID and putting with the, you know. Uh, so unless it's a serious violation of bodily or firearm or drug, or, you know, we aren't even having to pick them up. So our transport's right now, what is gonna change? And when we're transporting prisoners, we're going twice a week at the minimum for that. And that's not even including the emergency committals. So you kind of, you know, there's a lot more to it than, you know, when I got people, and we're being asked to do more and more and more for everybody all the time. And we should be asked, and I suppose we're on camera, you know?
You know, this is a very good job, I hope our legislators are watching.
This defund the police thing? I kind of agree with something. Don't make us go do the social worker's job, don't make us go do human services job, don't make us go get your kid out of bed because he won't go to school. Trust me, that happens. A kid won't go to school, I need the cops over here to make him go to school. It happens in Dallas, like, perfectly, trust me. We should not be involved in that. We should not be involved in going to the hospital, helping one of the victims. That's not law enforcement, that's not what we're here for. But everybody has gone to that automatically, you call the cops, you know? That's the problem. If we can get away with that, let us go back to doing our job, we'd be, I'd be fine. But the world isn't gonna change that fast. So anyway, I'm done, I just, like I said, I just don't like the spring thing, I just want you guys to be aware of what's going on and.
So you really don't need two additional deputies, you need not draw all of them?
I need ten, you want to go ten? No.
We need the first two steps to, to do that.
But honestly, you know, with all our increased paperwork with the civil process and, and everything else, it's, it, it's been coming for a while.
Well, Steve, you hit the nail on the head, you said we're going, you know, large area.
That has nothing. We're too big to be small, or too small to be big. Basically, in a nutshell.
Do you have a hub of adults?
How's the problem, everybody looks at this as a town of seven thousand people, you know?
No.
We're a hub community from much of the area.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, and, and we just don't have a services bill or anything, so we really get stopped at that point.
And then like I said, I don't get stopped on us, because there's nobody else. I've told human services, get your own transport van, you can take your own people. Especially the guy that's a, 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 a bond la day, a bond go, a whip pick, well, he's gonna, he's gonna kill himself. Yeah, someday, not today, not tomorrow. Well, he needs to emergency commit it, he needs to go from here, well, that's what we get. It's a blank set. Anyway, I've taken up and up here. But there is a justice, there is a reason, I just don't come and ask for things for, for visiting us, so. I just wanted to explain a little bit. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
And we'll keep up the fight.
I don't even know if we need you now.
I just have one, I just have one, I think I told Mr. Fritz this morning that our law enforcement center, I think it was like three weeks ago, had a prisoner that tried suicide. And on cameras and the intercom system saved his life.
Uh, did they push the button, did they not hear and stop them?
He was a federal prisoner. And at the, last week, we had thirty-seven federal prisoners there, so. Substantial law.
I mean, that air paid for that, video system right there. That one person. Saved him.
So it was all worth it.
Thank you for your support, by the way, I appreciate it.
I think Rob said they had forty-one, forty-eight, they got another marshal in two days.
I don't marshal, we're having trouble with, uh, other field, we're having trouble with the, our, uh, keeping them separated when they're new men, so you isolate them, so I mean, it's an issue for us even, but, you know, okay.
Okay, any other announcements?
I talked to Adam about this briefly, but it's my intention to round up the Home Law Charter Committee. Probably either at the end of June, although that's coming fast. And it might end up being the second of July, so, you know, all important all of that, so. But I want to make sure that we've got plenty of time to have what I believe will probably end up being two meetings. Uh, one to be a sit-down with the committee, to get everybody up to speed and to look over the documents, see if there's anything clear that, that they want to see changed. Uh, and then a hearing. And then at that point, that, that committee will then make a recommendation like you had before, uh, on whether or not it believes that county commissions seek passage. So look for that on the horizon.
Anybody else?
Collection or what?
Yeah, definitely, yeah. I was gonna say a big thing to Cami and her staff, and everybody that chipped in, the election went well, everything was smooth, I was able to sit on the campus and warn yesterday and not let it steal me, and, uh, we're always one of the first companies to report, and that says something to me, that it's organized and things are running where the schools are. So thank you for that.
Good job.
With that, your order?